All right, we call the September sixteenth meeting of regulating the Forest Hills Education Order. This is a meeting held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a community public hearing. There is a time for public comments during the meeting as indicated in Agenda eleven eleven. If you would like to speak during public comment, be sure to fill out one of the comment cards that are outside of your already payment. They will be collected right after the superintendent's report. Now if you would please stand and join us as Mrs. Tryon leads us into the legislative meetings.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the developed public which is safe and sound, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So can everybody watch? Everybody's getting started this school year. First, we have our department highlight, which will be presented by Assistant Superintendent for Destruction, Scott Haynes.
Okay. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Well, first, I'd just like to welcome the board, Superintendent Curry, administrators, community members here to this beautiful building. You are very much enjoying this space, so thank you. It's great to be here and just welcome again. What I would like to do is present data, trend data, on how's the district doing. The data that I'm going to share focuses on climate and culture as well as academic data for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We have slides available. They'll be here and here and then back there if it's easier for you to see. So, starting off, all of our professional learning really starts with our vision, our mission, and our guiding principles. But in the lower corner, we're also putting our district continuous improvement goals. In other words, what are we really, we're going after a lot, but what are we really focused on? And we're really focused on those MTSS implementation, our capacity, basically to take care of students both academically and behaviorally, specifically focusing on PBIS. But there's still a number of things that we continue to work on. In addition to that, we're really looking, or have been looking, at our literacy outcomes, really those intervention outcomes for students. So I just wanted you to see that because that's how all of our professional learning begins. So as we look at data, the culture and climate, this is the survey that our staff, our students, and our families, they would respond to. In addition to this, our school year starts off with our individual schools looking at how did their individual buildings come out as according to the data. What you're seeing here is sort of an aggregate of all of that data in a district profile. So when we talk to high school students, and the culture and climate survey data that I'm going to share with you tonight mostly focuses on the high school. The other data is certainly available. I selected high school just to share with you tonight. So when we look at Forest Hills from the perspective of students, this is one of the things that we thought was really important, and our high schools, our principals, our teachers really went after this. Do they feel a sense of belonging? Do they think that students are friendly? And do they like being at school? Sarah Whitford, who is our data person, really did a great job in taking this and creating a visual representation of that for you, so it's easier to read. But you can see that we're trending in a positive direction. That's really what we want to see because our teachers are saying, this is something that's super important. As we look at more student feedback, how does staff treat, so the staff treats all students fairly. Teachers treat students with respect, and discipline is enforced fairly. That's really important to us as we are working on being fair and being consistent with our discipline approaches as related to PBIS. Again, PBIS is more about teaching expectations. In other words, how do I navigate this space? High school students are increasingly likely to know that there are adults at school whom they can reach out to for both school and personal problems. When you see those numbers, again, we're looking at those trends. These are things that we see increasing. Again, focusing on students, looking at courses, are they interesting? Do they help them prepare? And do they help them to plan for their future education or career? Again, looking at those trends, all trending up. Also, when we look at the data, just because they're trending up doesn't mean that we're like, oh, hey, we're trending up, we're done. These are still things that we focus on within the buildings. Now, this is family perspectives. So we saw the students back here, same question, but just for the families now. So we asked families, the courses and activities offered at Forest Hills keep children engaged, are preparing children for life after high school, and prepare them again for their future. Now, this is different from our students. Our students feel this is our families, and this is how they respond, the percentage of responses that would agree. More families are satisfied with the accessibility of school staff, like, can I get ahold of my teachers? We looked at response rates from administrators, saw a nice jump there from two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four. And then this last one is teachers, feel families support them. It's a great percentage of our staff that feel like they're getting a lot of support from families, both academically and behaviorally. More high school students agree that staff treat all students fairly, teachers treat students with respect, and discipline is enforced fairly. Again, we're looking at, we're real concerned with those trends. Which direction are we going? The thing that we get excited about is this is after some intentionality with implementation Increasing percentages of high school students feel they have input in improving their schools, so that's that voice piece, and then their teachers encourage them to do the best they can in the school. The vast majority of our families continue to feel that teachers set high expectations for our students. So almost ninety-two percent of our families feel that way about our teachers and the expectations when coming to Forest Hills. And then this here, says although increasing students remain less confident than their families that homework helps them learn. So essentially, it's like asking kids, do you think homework is helpful? Sixty point seven students said, yeah, it's pretty good. And then families, eighty-five point four percent. So there seems to be a gap in the analysis between what parents think and what students think. We'll work on that. And then teachers remain more confident in students and families that the feedback they give on assessments, quizzes, and tests helps students learn. So again, there's a gap there. And so then we begin to ask, well, why? I don't have an answer for you tonight, just this is a noticing and a wondering, and so we'll do a gap analysis on that. Looking at then academic data, again, picture each of the buildings having their own individual data and being able to go through this with their teams because they're the most knowledgeable. They are closest to their students. They are the closest to be able to affect change. Like, what are we going to do when we look at these things? Where are our gaps? Academic data, we took a look at the third grade M-Step, both math and language arts, and we continue to see some upward momentum in that English, the ELA. And then we noted a slight dip in two thousand twenty-four, where we were at seventy-five percent down to seventy-three percent. But we looked at where we were prior to the pandemic, and we're still above that. Skipping up to fifth grade, looking at our M-Step data, fifth grade ELA on the seventy-one percent proficient and then math at sixty-three percent proficiency rate, holding steady with, again, looking at that pre-pandemic data. So what we do, interestingly enough, is we say, well, is this where we want to be? No, it's not. Interestingly, our, this year's curricular focus is on math. K five, we'll be doing a study for programming. Are we getting the results that we want to get with the curriculum that we're currently using? Our everyday math has been with us, boy, for a long time. I came to the district in ninety-nine, that was the curriculum that we were using. It's been through a few revisions, and we'll evaluate that again. Is that the tool that we want to use, or are we looking for a change? We don't know. Eighth grade PSAT data, you can see the trends there. Our ELA scores remain, they're sort of continuing up higher, and then we had a slight dip with our PSAT math scores. And again, asking similar questions, like, why did that happen? We had a real high bump in two thousand twenty-three, and then two thousand twenty-four, back down a little bit. So why did that occur? Looking at our high schools and ranking ourselves against other area schools, you can see where we fell. And this is ELA, the two thousand twenty-four data, and then with our math, where we are Taking a look at our, you can't see that because it's a screen sharing, but this is our AP exam data. We continue to have students enrolling and taking AP courses and taking those exams. This year, we had the highest number of participants in our AP courses and taking those AP exams, all while enrollment was down from that two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty number. So we're really proud of our students and how they're scoring. In addition, just a few things to know, we have a hundred and seventy-nine AP scholars, a hundred and eight AP scholars with honors, and a hundred and seventy-nine AP scholars with extension. So there's a lot to celebrate in the district, and there's also a lot to do. But we're really excited and again, and proud of our teachers, proud of our students for the work that we have been able to accomplish and will accomplish moving into the future. I just thank you for giving me the time to present some of the data. If you have any questions or need to see other snapshots of data, that's all available to all of you, and just thank you for the time.
Thank you very much, Scott. It's very nice to see such a house of friends, that's what we want to see. And I know a lot of the kids that are taking those AP tests, so the fact that we have slightly lower enrollment, and we have even more kids taking tests and doing better with the testing, to hopefully how well people are handling things at the high school level is being challenged with the forces. Anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Haynes?
I would just say I'm really encouraged and appreciative of seeing this data on the other side of the pandemic. I mean, a lot of, I think intentional things have been done the last couple of years aimed at some of these post-pandemic things, and it's nice to see, again, at least trends in the right direction. So data was gathered, steps were created, and things were done with intentionality to improve some of those, and now we're looking at data on the back end to continue those things and find new areas for us to improve. So I think that's a really good use of the data cycle and a really good example of the process of improving all of those data points.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you very much. All right, we are going to move on to our consent grouping. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull out for special consideration? Superintendent Curry, is there anything you'd like to draw attention to?
Yeah, just as one section in the human resources section, I did want to just bring to your attention on the far right column, you did add a column on things to Christine Meese. It's basically an explanation of why that position needed to be built, so that you're aware of what hub the open campus is. So just additional information, nothing really to do with, but just to know what the history was of that position. Thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, can I please have a motion to approve consent grouping items five A one through five D one?
My first. Sorry. Here.
Okay, go right through the second.
Oh, second.
Thank you. All right, let's move into our curriculum report, please, and Mrs. Tryon.
Yes, we had a very fast curriculum meeting. I think maybe one class is in my time on the board. I don't know if there's a competition going on for that. But we heard from Karen Kaynance, who works in our instruction office, and she did a really nice presentation for us on the professional learning plan that has been developed for the district, for the district's teachers and staff. You know, they have put together this really fantastic just kind of chart that details all of the different PD, professional development offerings for all of the teachers and staff throughout the district, month by month, where that learning is going to take place, what learning they can choose from, what's optional, what's mandatory, is that PD coming from the school itself, or is it being put on by, at the district level? So that's a fantastic resource for our staff and our teachers in the district. And then just to kind of summarize, what the professional learning plan encompasses is, it just really wants to get at the district's goals. So Mr. Hayne just talked about some of those goals, improving literacy interventions across the district, and how the professional learning can accomplish those goals or provide more training for our teachers in that area. The district also really wanted to make sure that all of the different professional learning opportunities were differentiated in approach, that they took into consideration staff feedback about what staff were looking for in professional learning, and that all of those professional learning offerings would incorporate behavioral support in their PD, job embedded support with their instructional coaches, sharing ideas across grade levels, staff feedback to continue planning, additional support, and then also collaboration time was prioritized. So not just like, here's a whole bunch of information, have a good day at school tomorrow, but time to take that information during that learning and collaborate about how they're going to put that into practice. So that was, that was the gist of the instructional highlight for our curriculum meeting. Also, to note, I think is important, I know, I appreciate this as a parent in the district, just a concerted effort to plan and provide that professional learning on days that are already scheduled to be no students in the building, to kind of limit, you know, subs that we have on a regular basis in a lot of our classrooms for that purpose. So that was our instructional highlight, and then also we are being asked tonight to approve the purchase of Advanced Placement Calculus, and that is going to be a six-year license. It's an updated version to what we already have, and it will also provide two hours of training for the staff that will use that resource, and that is going to be used for grades nine through twelve, for, like I said, AP Calculus. And then we're also going to review the book Atomic Habits, An Easy Improvement Way to Build Good Habits and Write Bad Ones by James Clear. And that is going to be a book study at the Flex Academy for grades nine through twelve. And that is really it for this week.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions to Mrs. Tryon? All right, then we'll head over to Dr. Rashad for finance.
Sure, we had a similarly brief meeting to start the school year, which is nice, as of the end of August, in terms of the financials, we're seventeen percent of the way through the fiscal year and four percent into the school year. So we reviewed our monthly financial statements, that were in the packet, nothing to draw our attention to, everything tracking for the most part for the first month, as expected. We had another great bond construction update, and I'll just hit a couple of highlights. Obviously, there's a lot of construction ongoing in different phases in a lot of our buildings. The Aquatic Center continues to move ahead into the schematic budget meeting for the first time phase, so all the plans start to get actually budgeted out and to see where all of those chips fall and what else needs to be redone. So that's progressing. The goal is still to bid all of that work in July of next year, and then start about a year from now, maybe next October is the goal. Northern Hills Middle is still in the early meet and learn type phase, talking with a lot of teachers in that building and users of those spaces. We also created, as we mentioned before, a, the district has created a bond facilities team, and just so everyone's aware, Dr. Fosson and myself have volunteered to be our representatives on that committee for that group, so we'll meet quarterly, that's just getting underway. And then another exciting update or addition is a new website that looks at the forward-looking progress for the two thousand twenty-three bond projects. If you're on the websites from the main page and you are on the two thousand twenty-three bond, main page, there's already pictures, there's already a lot of updates about the progress already happening, and there is a project schedule that can be clicked now, where you can see the entirety of the plans for the bond for the next eight, ten years, the projected budgets for all of those plans, the sort of timeline or priority list, when they're hopeful to embark and finish, and all of the information around the various projects. So I think a nice way for people who are interested in looking to see what's coming up next, or when is my school due for renovations, or what have you, that stuff is all there. Big thanks to Assistant Superintendent Davis and to Mrs. Brink and many others who put all of that together. And then for our action items, we only have one this month, and it was already discussed, the AP Calculus textbooks are coming from Savas Learning and other resources from Savas Learning for a cost not to exceed one hundred and seven thousand dollars out of the general fund. And that was all we had.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Dr. Rashad? All right, then let's go with a bold call opens.
Dr. Rashad?
Yes.
Ms. Seaborne?
Yes.
Ms. Hock?
Yes.
Ms. Cobell?
Yes.
Dr. Fosson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tryon?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, up next, the MASV Delegate Assembly. MASV has their annual conference every year in the fall. It's a little couple weeks earlier this year, I think than it was last year, and I'm very, very pleased that most all of us are able to take time away from our jobs and our families to go and do continuing education about how to be a better board member, learn things about board service, learn from experts, learn from other districts about what's going on out there. So I'm really glad that so many of us are able to go. One part of this annual conference is the delegates, Delegate Assembly. That's where they decide a bunch of issues affecting education and just puts together MASV's policy on that, like, sort of what they envision. And delegates to that have to be school board members, and they have to be certified by the board, which is why we have to bring this up as a topic here. I'm the only one who is going to be at the delegate at the conference on Thursday night when the Delegate Assembly goes, happens. So by default, I'm suggesting that we have somebody make a motion that I act as our delegate to the MASV Delegate Assembly. I move that you, Dr. Fosson, be our delegate for the assembly. Let's talk about that. All right, thank you. Can we have a voice vote on this one, please? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I will be the Delegate Assembly person. Thank you. Now, another thing regarding MASV is, MASV is offering seven hundred and fifty dollars on select event registrations and services that are completed by school districts by June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five in honor of their Diamond Anniversary. So it's a free seven hundred and fifty dollars. They encourage boards to decide collectively how that seven hundred and fifty dollars should be spent, and since we don't have any services that we have planned coming up with MASV, but we do have several of us that are going to the conference, I would suggest that perhaps we use that seven hundred dollars to defray the cost of our attendance at the MASV. So if everybody is okay with that, if somebody would like to make a motion, we can go forward with that. I move that we use that MASV reimbursement to defray the cost of the classes that we'll be taking at the conference. Okay? And can we please have a voice vote on this one as well? All in favor of using the seven hundred and fifty to defray conference costs for attendees? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, perfect. We will then quickly move on here to informational items. Mr. Curry?
All right, thank you. As you noticed in your board package, we accepted the resignations of one administrator and three teaching staff members. Other than that, there isn't any more additional information.
All right, perfect, thank you. Then we will move on to our superintendent's report, and again, as soon as superintendent's report is done, we'll collect the comment cards, so if anybody has a last minute comment they would like to make, now's your time to go fill out your comment.
All right, thanks. So the committee reports obviously have a lot of information, I'll try not to be too repetitive there, but there's a lot of work to be, you know, proud of that is happening in the district. I want to make sure to emphasize that. The school year is going along smoothly. We definitely had some challenges with transportation that we have, you know, addressed during, and also have made some plans as far as moving forward. We will be doing some debriefing next month with all of the different departments that will be working together to try to improve that process of onboarding, updating, you know, all of the new students and updating the information for our students so that the card implementation and all of the routing can happen sooner, so that our families don't have to wait, make those phone calls and have some of the struggles certainly. It didn't go as smoothly as what we had hoped, obviously, but we definitely will be planning to make some changes moving forward, as we made changes throughout the start of the year with this newer card system. On a real positive side, we did have an influx of applications. It's up to almost thirty applicants for our transportation positions. So I believe it was in the area of twenty when we reported out at one of the committee meetings, but we continue to emphasize that we have openings. Carrie has done some different things as far as having referral cards and placing them in different areas throughout the community. But ultimately, in these types of positions, the employees themselves are the best advocates for new team members, and I think that some of the team members have really taken it seriously and tried to bring in, you know, good people. When I was over there one time, there was a driver that we got from another school district, which I won't name because I don't like this very much, because they lost three drivers to us, and they continued to, you know, recruit their friends and colleagues, and those are the best kind to get because they're already trained and certified, and they can get their work right away. So kudos to the transportation department, they're definitely working hard to get better at the service that we're providing there. So I talked a little bit about the enrollment, which is no mystery in our district, that enrollment has been declining in the past, and I just wanted to emphasize that we're working to really try to address some of the opportunities prior to kindergarten, meaning the children typically called the young fives would be one area that we're working on, and also the potential of some additional preschool opportunities. Our state has a lot going on with preschools. The GSRP program has changed, you know, across our state, not only the income level, but a variety of other things, and I think that it's really important to understand funding wise, you know, the GSRP is being funded at a higher level, certainly if you go five days a week, you know, significantly a higher level, and the GSRP is really the basis that a lot of the preschools that our governor is trying to implement across our state is really based upon. So we'll continue to look at that as well. Mr. Hayne will be putting together a committee with the effort to be early in the calendar year, be able to provide some additional information so families can be at Forest Hills, in those types of programs, and continue throughout their educational experience. Once they come, they will love what they experience and continue to be our Hawks, Huskies, and Rangers. We're also looking at the Flex Academy, which I had mentioned before, and I just want to emphasize that that work is still ongoing, looking at moving the Flex Academy students home to the Transition Center on the northern campus and out of the middle school for very strategic reasons, and ultimately making some staffing changes and really the culture that's there that, you know, supports the students and their learning, and then also how we're providing our instruction, some of the virtual opportunities are being expanded as well with additional levels of rigor and those types of things. So ultimately, we'd love to be able to serve all of our students that prefer to have some sort of virtual education right here in Forest Hills and not have to send them to another entity to get that education. We'll be having our first safety committee maybe next month, something we've been talking about, and obviously, every day in the news, it feels like there's another reason to, you know, do X, Y, and Z around the safety. This is a committee that we've been talking about, and we have invited our respective members, basically district representatives as well as building representatives, and encompassing all of the grade level spans as well as the attendance areas, and then also local law enforcement will be part of the committee as well. Really looking forward to having those discussions around processes, protocols, as well as the physical security. Many thanks to Ryan, who's really provided Many thanks to Ryan, who's really provided a lot of leadership in this area. And Mr. Kimball and I will be the co-chairs of the committee this year and will continue, and this will be an ongoing, evolving committee. It's not a one-year thing, but it's something, school safety is never finished and it's an ongoing, you know, cooperative for all of us, whether you're parents or teachers or superintendent. We all have to keep our eyes open and say something if we see something. Next week, the Forest Hills Education Association and the administration will begin meeting in what's called a contract maintenance type of a setting. I think the cabinet members and Annie Debold and the officers of the F H P A could be willing to come together and have conversations on a monthly basis throughout the school year rather than waiting, you know, until the contract expires and then start having conversations. But again, trying to create a more collaborative conversation around issues that we can address and really try to problem solve things before, you know, they become issues and just having year-round conversations. So again, representatives from each of the levels in the attendance areas will be represented. So really looking forward to some positives out of that. We do have a tentative agreement with the Transportation Department and they are working through the ratification process. And once they can do that ratification process, then we'll bring it to the board for approval. So depending on the timing of all of that and our regularly scheduled meetings, we'll discuss when to put that on an agenda. So I was able to shadow a student at Central High School, Keegan Redmond. And it was a great time for me and it was enjoyable. And Keegan did a wonderful job hosting me, took it very seriously and brought me a snack, which I really appreciated. And had some regrets, I didn't bring water with me. It was a tough, you know, tough day to get through it. All these kids were smarter than me and I don't have their drinks, but I made it through. But no, it was really a great experience and we have some time set up with Eastern and Northern students as well. So looking forward to those experiences and kind of putting it all together. So had some really good conversations and to see them through the eyes of the students is very valuable. CJ mentioned this a little bit, but we have updated the website and he mentioned about the bond work, lots of pictures and descriptions and the presentations that have occurred from the committee meetings. Those are all available. They also updated around the seven candidates running for the two Board of Education seats, photos and the candidate responses to all the identical questions. It's listed on the website now, so you can find that information. And then we also have some general information around the ballot and voting in general just to help the public. So thanks to Elizabeth and Isabella for their work on that, really appreciate it. And as a follow-up to the last meeting that we had, the Moms for Liberty, there was a list created by the Moms for Liberty and it was recognized by the District of Kansas, Topeka Division, which doesn't allow for OCR to enforce the 2024 Title IX regulations in nine of our schools. And that is the Central High, Central Middle, Eastern High, Eastern Middle, Meadow Brook Elementary, Northern High, Northern Trails, Orchard View, and Pine Ridge. Those are the schools that are on that list through the core system. And again, it's about an injunction from OCR enforcing any of the 2024 Title IX changes with that. So we communicated out to our respective administrators to make them aware and ultimately, if we do have issues, the contact continues to be Ms. Meese and she will support people as we go through that. So one other item, just wanted to mention that Scott and I continue to meet with organizations to really look at the programs that we have. And what we're trying to do is trying to, you know, look at what we have. And we're obviously thankful for the things that we have. But we also want to really start to look at the programs about the intended purposes, are they meeting our student needs? And then in preparation for, you know, our strategic planning and really try to position ourselves as a district who can continually innovate based on what our student needs are and not be stuck in the programs that we've had year after year. So the programs that we have currently are amazing and we need to continue to look at those and figure out, do our students still want those, need those? They need tweaks, we need to look at other areas. So we're again, trying to, you know, find some outside organizations to partner with to try to really help us and push us to be even greater than what our students feel we are currently. So those are all of my updates.
Thank you very much. Super thorough, I love it. Okay, we are now up to board communications. I have a couple, not a couple of anybody else's. One is, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that not only are many of us attending additional training, Superintendent Kirby is going to be heading up to the Michigan Association of Superintendents and Administrators Conference in Tractor City to meet with other superintendents and administrators from across the state, listen to speakers, have some good learning and find out exciting things he learns and bring back to us here at FHPS. The other one, you briefly touched on it, is the, I wanted to remind everybody that we do have an election coming up in November. There are two seats that are on the ballot. And as you mentioned, the school district, as sort of a service to the community, sent out a questionnaire to all of the candidates. The candidates responded and those responses are unedited and on our website. The school district doesn't endorse any candidates. This information that they put out is strictly for that. But I also wanted to reiterate that per FHPS's policy, anyone who wants to use a school logo, like Central, Northern, Eastern, one of those logos, the FHPS logo, the FHPS tagline, you need permission from the district to do so for any event. And the school district has not given and does not give permission to anybody to use any of those logos in their campaigns. So it doesn't matter if it's online, if it's on a T-shirt, if it's on a yard sign, if it's on, you know, piece of paper that you pass out, you're not allowed to use any of the logos. So if you have used the logo, please remedy this quickly. You cannot have it, just because it's already out there doesn't mean, oh, well, going forward, I won't use it from now on. No, you have to go back and fix your stuff so that it doesn't have any of the FHPS logo on it. Those are my board updates, communications, does anybody else have one?
I just have a brief update from the foundation, who is back in full swing this fall. The Fall Grant Cycle Act just closed yesterday, last night, 51 applicants again this fall, so great numbers. The grant committee, which is composed of community members, Board of Trustee members, district representation, are all going to start reviewing all of those and we'll see what types of things were requested and will ultimately be granted. Foundation wants people to look for them at upcoming football games as well. They will be at the Hawk Rally on Friday, the Central Tailgate on the 27th, and at Northern's game on October 11th. So stop by and say hi and get some goodies and all of that stuff from the foundation table. And then already coming up is the gala that will look a little bit different this year. The gala is the foundation's primary fundraising opportunity that funnels money right to building principals. So everything that gets raised there, apart from the grant cycles, goes straight into the schools for where principals feel their needs are. This year is a new location, a new theme of the betting on bright futures is the theme, kind of a casino-style event, it sounds like. So it's going to be cool and a lot of information, if you want to attend, if you want to sponsor any of that, at the website, fhpss.org.
Could I tap a little on that too? Just mentioned with the casino theme that there will be no live gaming at this event.
All within the rules of, yeah, so appropriate event, yes.
But also mentioning that the trivia night that was held, I believe, last spring was so popular that the foundation had another one just recently. I attended that one and apparently they sold out the tables within an hour.
Again, yeah.
Of noted, yeah. So if anybody is interested in going to the next trivia night, it's on March 14th. The theme will be Pi Day. And yeah, I just wanted to mention this. All right, terrific, thank you very much. Those trivia nights are a lot of fun and I wish I could have gone to the one on Friday, but it was the Northern-Central football game that night, so I was needed there. Yes, that I know, because then I was there until I had to go. You had to go, right, yep. All right, any other board comments? Okay, then, at this time, we welcome members of the community to address the board. When you are called, please come up to a microphone and state your name and your address and limit your comments to three minutes. We start all comments to the board. For standard procedures, we will not respond to questions or interact with the speaker during public comments. Everyone who indicates they would like follow-up from the district will get follow-up from the appropriate administrator. Amy Glass. Put me up for handouts. Who should I go first to?
Hear me okay? My name is Amy Glass, live at 11656 Peck Lake Road. I am a lifelong Lowell School District resident. I don't own any property in Forest Hills. I don't pay any taxes in Forest Hills. I have no vote in Forest Hills matters and I don't have any family members attending your school district. I'm not here to comment on your decisions, it's none of my business and I don't think it would be polite or respectful to do so. What I am here to discuss is last Monday's school board meeting, which endured public comment from eight, yes, eight, non-district members of Forest Hills for Just Education in a coordinated effort to pollute and dilute the voices and views of a neighboring district's school taxpayers and voters. Specifically, your board trustee, Holly DeBoer's participation in that Monday event deserves inquiry and discussion. A transcript of Holly's comments?
I'm sorry, we can't discuss individual board members' activities if they're not related to their school board duties at public comment.
Okay, so. She's off the hook.
Thank you. Doug Lee.
And I am a resident, 8613 52nd Street. Again, my name is Doug Lee.
Doug, one second, let me restart this time. Okay.
Okay. So in the air of, in the spirit of cooperation, we have to give Mr. Kirby the benefit of the doubt. We've witnessed for 17 years the decline in the academic standards at Forest Hills, but that's not our new superintendent. You get a comment, so you need to evaluate current programs and see if they're effective or not. What I will say, students don't pick the school district. They never pick, I mean, very rare, maybe a handful. It's the parents who decide to put their kids in. It's the parents who buy the house, it's the parents who decide to work here that send their kids here. So surveying students, what they feel about school, the person we need to survey are the parents. There's 9,200 parents and I only have two people, okay? So we're going to really get an accurate assessment of what parents want. We need to stop asking the students, let's start asking the parents. That would be a great place to start as a benchmark. Now, this district was handed off to Mr. Kirby. And I hope that he can address these issues and evaluates where academic standards are. But in the 2022 year, 22, 23 year school year, Forest Hills District has 61.9% math proficiency. And I've said this before, this is on the same page. We can spin this any way we want to, that's fine, but let's make it better. Let's not say this is okay. Scott said he's willing to make improvements. That's the type of thing we need to look at if we're all going to get along. And I've been focused on academics. So that's why I'm saying, let's give Mr. Kirby, I'm giving him the benefit of the doubt. I want him on a path to success because I've been here and I watched the 17-year decline, okay? Number two, in order for us to be effective, we are the taxpayers, we are the citizens in this community and we had a voice to voice on the agenda because public comment was on the, was up top before the agenda happened for years, for all the years I've been here, up till two years ago. That's what it's always been. Now, I know that the anticipation was that we would put public comment in, that way people won't start showing up before school board meetings. Well, guess what? We're still showing up, okay? So I suggest, and we're respectful, if it's an agenda item, we would like the ability to make comment on the agenda item before it gets voted on. We'll add any more to your meetings than it does now. We operate that in the past, I like to operate on the going forward. Schools, buses, okay? Unlike East Rand Rapids where we're a walking community, most of these parents work. The mom and dad work and they rely on a consistent bus system in order to go to work. Their employers are not as forgiving when they got to run their kid and something changes. We have to have, want to have the heart to fix the problem. If we just accept where we're at, we're going to put applications out. I go to a lot of school districts and they have the heart to solve this problem. This is not a difficult problem to solve. It's a relatively easy problem, but we don't, as a district, want to have the heart to solve it. Ask people how to solve it, you know, if you find out which one, break them over the past and solve the problem.
Okay, okay. I don't know why it's a single, I'm sorry, but for three minutes of that.
Thank you.
Yeah. I don't know if the volume's up, so we'll go try again. All right, Vincent Mahon.
Vincent Mahon, you'll find me at 6860 Cascade Road. My speech reflects my views and not any affiliated organization. I have a question for Superintendent Kirby. How does a parent partner with their administration in policy generation? Why do I ask? Because on 5/8/23, I posed the same question to Scott Haig, Dan Beam, and this board. My interest in not exposing innocence to pornography in school libraries is very well-known. I don't admonish unhelpfully, I have a potential solution ready, if anyone would listen. Despite my persistence, I remained unanswered for two months until Scott Haig met with me on 7/17, only to tell me that he saw his job as enforcing policies and not changing them. He directed me to the superintendent or the board, so I did my homework. Policy 1101, 1301, and 2101 directed me to the board first. On 8/21/23, I verbally invited dialogue. In subsequent email, President Fosson dismissed me unwilling to meet or write a proposal despite having never read it. Then in October, she wrote, quote, "Board members do not write policy. Policy language is drafted by our law firm." This is technically disingenuous. Sure, the board doesn't write the policy, but then how does it through a law know what policy is created? Fosson would not tell me. Email in November, Fosson stated the board would, quote, "Consider any good idea as long as it's relevant to our duties." By policy 2201, 82, and 4601, I considered my idea good and relevant. As none of you had seen it yet, my idea was at least over that courtesy. After clarifying legalese, I sent individual emails to each board member on 1/3/4 inviting personal discussion, inverse discussion. By 2/7, Fosson had not only opened our private email together to the entire board to read, but dismissively stated, quote, "I think we will just need to agree to disagree regarding my proposal," which she still hadn't read. She also ignored my second question, who is my point of contact for ideas? Effectively cutting me and the entire public from the board that they elected. Vice President Koval responded on 1/6/24, "I would like to meet with you and hear your ideas." I sent her a reply but never received written communication back. Over two months, she twice verbally expressed interest in meeting. I respectfully asked her to email me convenient times. That was met with silence, effectively ghosted. This has been a one-year goose chase. Haig refuses to leverage my concerns. Fosson dismisses me casually without reading or answering all questions. And Koval sends the initial interest that demonstrates no follow-through. There was no win in asking me to interrupt Superintendent. So it's your turn, Superintendent Kirby. Who is the community's point of contact for offering ideas to shape or policy? Please show all the parents how we may partner with you to influence the direction of our children's education. We are your constituents. Please do not forget us, like Haig, Fosson, and Koval did. Good day.
Robin Vandalsen.
Hi, nice to meet you. My name's Robin Vandalsen. I live at 4511 Fort Forrest Court. I just wanted to talk a little bit about transportation. I know it's like beating a dead horse at this point, so I just thought I would give you my brief three-minute story. When my son, Henry, started kindergarten, it was six years ago now, he's now in fifth grade. And on his very first day of kindergarten, the bus didn't pick him up. I drove him to school, I talked to the principal, I called the Transportation Department with no answer, obviously. And they assured me at the school in the front office that he would return home on the bus. After over an hour of waiting, he gets off the bus terrified and tells me that they drove him all around the entire district until at the very end, thankfully, there were two older kids on his bus that helped the bus driver find their way back to our street. That was six years ago. This year, my son, Henry, got off the bus at the wrong bus stop on his very first day of school. He made his way home, but it was close to a mile away and... He made his way home, but it was close to a mile away and my, I've been having panic attacks since this started, I just, I would be happy to chair a committee, I would be happy to do anything. I think there are so many parents in this district that want transportation fixed. I know they're not drivers, but there are parents who want to help. There are people who want to do something to make this better. We want to help you guys. We don't, we don't want this to keep happening. I know it's not just me and I know, I'm sure it was embarrassing for the district this year when it went on the news. That was not my, I'm half a kindergartner, but I just want you to know that there are some of us out here who want to help, we would like communication. I still have not heard a single thing from the transportation department. My messages, well, I can't actually leave a message because it's full. But I did talk to the HR manager at the administration building when I started calling there. So some kind of, you know, communication, something to fix this problem, I think we would all be happy with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robin Vandercheck, Cascade Township. I have three questions for the board and I've left an email address on a comment card for your reply. First one, currently there are lawsuits making their way through the courts regarding age inappropriate reading materials on school library shelves. And according to an attorney, I've heard speak on this topic, and the American Library Association, they stated that it is board members who are legally responsible for those resources being on shelves. So I'm curious as to whether this is actually true and if not you, then who? Second question, I'd like a timeline of the policy changes that were enacted after I had submitted all of the required paperwork for a book review at the June 2023 Board of Ed meeting. Because after my submission, I received a call from Mr. Hade requesting, could the process be delayed till school resumed in the fall in order to save the district money? Instead, when fall came, I was notified that I was now banned from the book review process. That's a prime example of sowing seeds of distrust with the stakeholders by saying one thing and then turning around and doing another. I would like, in the interest of transparency, the name of either admin or three-letter agency or the law firm that was responsible for what I consider sadly dishonest policy tactic. After witnessing the lengths-
A board?
After witnessing the lengths that were taken to keep a book detailing lewd accounts of lecherous pedophiles defiling minor children in every sexual way imaginable, I no longer view our school libraries as the safe space that they once were and I'm not alone. So my last question is what policy do you have in place to educate unknown parents in regards to the deviant sexual content that's available at their children's fingertips? Parents need to possess the information required to make informed decisions and caring parents don't appreciate things that damage their children's psyche. And in ending, I hope that you reconsider your hasty decision to enact the new Title Nine policy as parents have already filed lawsuits in Colorado where eleven-year-old boys spent a wilderness week changing clothes in their sleeping bags and refusing to shower for the duration of the trip because their cannon supervisor was a trans identifying female student who identified as a boy that week, but the week prior identified as a girl. And the parents had no idea and are angry that their children were placed in inappropriate situations without their knowledge. So just want parents to be advised of the truth. Thank you.
My name is Stephanie Boone. I live at 2205 Null Point Drive in Ada. Anything that I say tonight are my views only, not the views of any organization I may be affiliated with. I sense a pattern tonight that we're hearing from the public commenters about a feeling of being ghosted by the school board and the administrators. A lot of empty promises have been made, a lot of, you know, false hope for myself as well these past four years that I've been coming to school board meetings and voicing my concerns. And I know that there are people out there who think this is a concerted effort and that there's recruitment involved. There's not, there's not. This is genuine. These are people who, most, many of these people, I have no clue who they are who show up. And I'm so proud that people find the courage to come to meetings anymore and voice their concerns because in my experience and in the experience of many of these people here who are telling you, we are feeling ghosted, the same thing is happening to all of us. Instead of including us and allowing those of us who have concerns to be involved and be a part of our children, our grandchildren, our community members' education, you are shutting us out, you're silencing us. And, you know, we can keep on painting lipstick on a pig, you know, or we can look at the actual problems from within. My youngest son broke his foot this past weekend and he was put into a walking boot temporarily. They've confirmed that his foot is broken, but he's been referred to an orthopedic surgeon because they need a specialist to look inside and take a look and see what we can fix from within. And there's unwillingness on your part and the part of many of the administrators to do that. You know, I appreciate Mr. Hade's efforts tonight to talk about climate and culture and academics, but we're not getting the full picture. It's not transparent. How many participants were there in each of these surveys? You know, he likes to make a lengthy statement about our families and our students. Well, how many of our families and our students actually participated? Or how many, you know, sat out from those surveys because they don't feel that their voices are heard anyway? We need to think about that. We need to look at how many people are even participating in these surveys anymore. It's important to think about that because, you know, if we're doing such a great job and, believe me, I hope we can succeed together, but if we are, why does our enrollment continue to drop? Things to think about. Thank you.
I'm Eric Scott Fitzoldman, I live in the district. My main concern tonight is, again, is the lack of educational achievement recognition, specifically the awarding of valedictorian, salutatorian distinctions, and even the honor roll lists at Forest Hills Central High School. And the lack of those lists on display at both Northern and Eastern High Schools. I went to those schools today to see them. At both schools, I was told that they do not have anything like them. Every semester, a list should be put out within the school acknowledging those students who have made the honor roll. This will help to acknowledge those high achievers as well as motivate those that are working hard to make that list. After the last BOE meeting, I did have a brief email exchange with Assistant Superintendent Hade and President Fawcett in regards to not having valedictorian awards. This was Superintendent Hade's response to our valedictorian. A few of the issues that administrators and staff surfaced were unhealthy competition, a narrow focus on GPA, a decline in student collaboration, an impact on mental health, and a negative impact on teacher-student relationships. Now, one of the reasons I am pushing for these award distinctions to come back is because there are actually numerous scholarships available to just valedictorians and salutatorians. If FHPS does not have that award, then our students miss out on those opportunities. Now, I can understand where Mr. Hade is coming from and a possible way to alleviate some of those issues is to adjust the focus off of just grades and change how valedictorian and salutatorian are awarded, which can and should be done. Obviously, academics should be a big part of it, say fifty percent, but the rest of the scoring could be what the student has done over their high school career while at FHPS, adding up if they were in athletics, musicals, plays, the student council, band, volunteering, started or were a part of a club, that game changers thing that Northern has, the National Honor Society, et cetera. There are numerous ways that this could be done and still acknowledge and award the top students. As I said in the last meeting, equitable outcome is impossible as equal effort will not happen. The only thing that FHPS can offer is equal opportunity. I know that doing this type of thing, or this type of scoring, may be difficult. However, the district spends tens of thousands of dollars on computer software programs each year to keep track of everything that our students do, Power School, Canvas, Final Forums, et cetera. I'm sure that there's a way to track and score these things. You just need to direct the staff to do that or form a stakeholder committee. Each high school will only need to do this for the graduating class of that year. I'm sure that they can make this happen if you guys, or if they are directed to do so. In regards to having an updated honor roll list, only Forest Hills Central has a place for an honor roll in the hallway outside the main office. Granted, it has not been updated since the first semester of the 2022-2023 school year. I did ask about that in email with President Fawcett and Mr. Hade. I even spoke with Assistant Principal Stefano at the open house September 4th. He informed me that it was the counseling office that was in charge of that. I went to the school today to check and again, has not been updated. Six people work in that office. What are they doing all that?
Time.
Thank you.
Jeanne Stone here.
Hi, maybe Jeanne Stone here? I live at Forest Hills 5. I'm acting a little bit clearer when I'm, I'm trying to straighten up as I'm talking. West Abbey Mill Drive in Ada, Michigan. What I have sent so much a comment is as a question. I've been hearing a request for identification aloud about Title, this Title Nine, and how it's going to affect our students. And it could include having boys who identify as criminals playing brutal sports or going to those bathrooms or locker rooms. And I've also heard about something called education, about getting an education so we can have to help this happen for our system. And I'm just kind of confused about where does the district stand on this? What are you gonna do about this, this part of Title Nine? Are we getting a lot of boys in those bathrooms or? So I would just like somebody to contact me and give me an answer. Thank you.
Thank you. John Brugger.
Hi, everyone. I'm John Brugger, 2526 Electric in Ada, lifetime Forest Hills resident, Forest Hills grad. I don't have planned comments. This is actually gonna pass because you already covered what I was talking about, but I want to revisit Dr. Fawcett stopping Amy Glass from speaking from Lowell. I understand that you can't have a discussion back, but I feel since a large number of our community residents, including a board member, went to their meeting and dressed down their board, I feel like they should at least have the opportunity to be heard. Now, if you feel like you maybe need to contact her privately, I understand that, but I'm not happy that Lowell allowed some really hateful stuff to be said, including that their kids sucked. That's a quote. And we shut them down from responding to that. So I would ask that, that may be, excuse me, may be revisited among you and allow her to speak. She's a very, very uninvulnerable resident parent that was hugely offended by what our board member did in their community last week. It was disgusting. It was disgusting. But thank you for hopefully revisiting her.
Thank you.
Jerzakowalski in the White House on White Hills. I'm not being ironic when I say that I really want to thank the board for your assistance. For several years, we've been trying to get parents to pay much closer attention to what has really been going on in our public schools and the direction they're going and how our board bears responsibility and some would say culpability. Last month, you made our message clear to those who should be paying much closer attention. You refused to listen to any public comment regarding our informed concerns about Title Nine before your vote. That got the attention of parents here previously detached from board meetings as some were heard to say afterwards, "We're gonna look into North Point." Of course, it's not just your refusal to really listen to our concerns and your compulsion to rubber stamp the implementation of another woke policy. The trajectory of our public schools, of our country's future generations, is becoming ever more apparent, unavoidable, undeniable. Up to the 1980s, our country ranked second from the top worldwide in our students' academic performance. But in the early 80s, critical education theory began sweeping through our teachers' colleges. Critical Ed Theory is the direct precursor of Critical Race Theory. How do you spell CRT now? D-E-I. Critical Ed Theory was successfully sold to higher education by Paulo Freire, an education expert, and by the way, a hardcore Marxist atheist. Freire became one of the most quoted experts in textbooks for wannabe teachers. And his quotes were explicit. Bottom line, he preached that literacy and math proficiency, academics, were secondary to our kids' political, social education. And that involved teaching everything through the lands of the oppressed versus all of us oppressors. After all, academics are tools of the oppressors. Again, how do you spell CRT? Long story short, our country's public schools have plummeted from the top three down now to around 30th, 30th worldwide. The infusion of political, social education, call it woke ed, at the expense of academics and your refusal to listen is motivating more and more parents to desperately try to find openings in private and parochial schools. Again, thank you for making that point last month.
This meeting, the comments are closed. The board thanks you for your input and the appropriate district representative will follow up with all of the input we've had today. Is there any other business for the board? Hearing that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.